I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council Joint Meeting with our Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Hornish, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Proud to. Please stand and join me in our pledge to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Need a second.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I heard you.
Okay, all those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM the end-of-business day to melanieanderson, our city clerk, at manderson@sumamish.us. Please be aware, City Council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Okay, first on the list, I have Michelle Drovdahl.
Now it's on. Good evening, Mayor Malchow and councilmembers. I'm Michelle Drovdahl. I'm the regional manager for the Sumamish Library, and with me is Irene Wickstrom. She's the Librarian Services Manager. We're here to brag, inform you about what has been going on at the library. First, I want to call attention to our statistics, which I put on your desks there. We checked out 860,934 items, and our Sumamish patrons downloaded 249,458 items, and this is a grand total of 1,110 items, 392 items checked out for 2018. And we had over a million minutes used on our computers at the library, and Sumamish patrons placed 274,694 holds that came from all over King County to our library. But circulation and computer times aren't the only things we do, and Irene will tell you about some of those.
One of our outreaches is Echo Glen Children's Center that accepts kids from all over King County. We provide quarterly programs to improve life skills, such as a bike repair workshop, a poetry slam, and inspirational speakers to motivate the youth. Job literacy skills, such as resume writing and computer classes, help prepare for life after incarceration. The library strives to be a community partner, and we often participate in and feature library programs and displays in coordination with city and Y events, such as Extravaganza and Rigapalooza, where we bring the Library-to-go bookmobile and let folks come aboard and take a look. We enjoy seeing our patrons at the local farmer's market. Sometimes you can find Miss Sarah and her puppets doing an outdoor storytime near the stage. And our storytimes at the library are well-attended, too. Miss Sarah is a popular and well-loved storyteller. We had 130 storytimes with 7,897 participants in 2018. The theme for our summer reading program was a universe of stories, and we had many interesting STEM-based programs, such as the one where kids built a virtual rocket, launched, and got it into orbit. And we also bring exciting performers, such as Alex Zerbi de Zaniak, to the Plaza Stage, where they fill the grassy area with large crowds of enthusiastic kids. For the second summer in a row, students and their teachers from Lake Washington School District stopped at the library for four weeks of visits to hear stories, learn about the library, and check out books. On the last day, each child received a free book to keep, along with prizes for those who completed the summer reading program.
As you can see, we have many programs, but most of all, we have staff who are willing and able to help you find the information you need. And then there's me, who's always ready to help you find a good book to read. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you. I think Miss Sarah has been there for quite some time, because my kids, who are in the audience, used to go to Miss Sarah. Next, I have James Eastman.
Saw the LLC ordinance was on the docket for tonight. I'm pretty sure I'm the reason for the ordinance. I was actually planning to pull a permit to build a barn for my daughter and her horse under the guise of my LLC, and a lot of my neighbors are for it. A lot of them are against it. The ones that are for it, they just don't bother coming out to give their support. The ones that are against it, one of them hates horses, another one doesn't like kids, the other one fears roosters, another one doesn't want my field cleared to put a barn. So they have all sorts of reasons why they're against it. The LLC was supposed to protect me from my past. Unfortunately, if I have to apply for my permit and use my name, people are going to do some Internet research and dig up a lot from my past. So rather than wait for you guys to hear about it from my neighbors, I want you guys to be the first to hear about my past, and you can ask me some questions here, straight from my camel's mouth. It is true, I did participate in a Ben &amp; Jerry's Eating Contest when I was in college. Oh, man, what happened? Can I get a slide two? Anyways, I did a lot of dumb stuff when I was in college, some things which I regret. It was 2002, I believe it was. Do you see slide number two? Yeah, 20 scoops of 10 different flavors of ice cream, four bananas, three cookies, and one brownie, sprinkled whipped cream, gummy bears, walnuts, and fudge. Won $150 doing it, I only had to pay $5 to participate. The defining moment was when James picked up the gallon over his head and drank the remaining ice cream so he'd be underweight, so their coach. Next slide. "We didn't have a strategy," said Eastman. "We both ate beforehand. I had a steak dinner, and Chris had a pizza." I think I've eaten more than that on a friendly bet. So anyways, now that my name's going to be out there, and my neighbors are going to hear this, here's what you're going to hear from my neighbors. One is a Republican, total capitalist Republican, and he hates Ben &amp; Jerry's. So you will see all over social media that I am a flaming liberal that supports Ben &amp; Jerry's and steps foot in their store. One of my neighbors is a Democrat, and he's upset that I ripped off Ben &amp; Jerry's for $145. Clearly, I should have a license for being a professional eater. Everyone knew I was going to win. I didn't have a license. Not only that, but I committed tax fraud, because I won $145, and I think we need an inquiry to see if that is on my tax return, and before my permit is approved. One of them is an animal rights activist and does not like the fact that I'm chewing up gummy bears. It's glorifying eating of endangered species. Another one, another one doesn't support eating meat, dairy. So in their social media posts, they've said that I am not only going to build a barn, but now I'm building a slaughterhouse to slaughter cows for my steak dinners, and a dairy house to support my ice cream addictions and habits. And they put that out on social media. I support methane released into the atmosphere. And the people on social media, one of them saw me at IHOP and said, "Yeah, I saw him at IHOP for breakfast." So they've added egg, chicken farm. Another guy saw me at Chick-fil-A for lunch. And so now, social media's got a whole list, and it's going crazy. And David Pyle really wants to sign off on my permit, because, you know, it's just for my daughter's horse, but he doesn't want to be painted as someone who supports methane production, or painted as someone that hates endangered species, or this or that. So he doesn't know what to do, because I've clearly complied with the permit, and now he's being painted into a corner. So this whole LLC thing, we preach we don't discriminate based off of race, gender, religion, sex. Add hyphen there, baldness, size, preference for ice cream, steak, whatever. But yet, in passing this ordinance, we open this up for all sorts of discrimination.
I do need you to wrap this up.
Yeah, I know, I got delayed at the start. So...
The clock wasn't running.
Oh, it wasn't? All right. So let's just keep this ordinance to merits. Do we comply with code? Do we not comply with code? Staff turnover is really high already, because they get painted into these corners, and rather than have to decide if my proposal complies with code, or being painted as someone that hates bears, or supports methane production, you know, no matter what, you just can't win, so they leave the city. Anyways, I hope that we will allow people to have LLCs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. I think you won public comment tonight, by the way. It's not even over, but it was very good. Okay, next, I have Anjali De Souza.
My name is Anjali De Souza.
And we are a group of five, but as you can see, only two of us came. We're here to spread the message to save trees. For a long time, trees have been getting cut down, and not enough has been done to save trees. But when we heard about this, we decided to make a change. We are not just saving trees, we're saving animals and Mother Nature. When we cut down trees, we don't just kill trees, we kill animals, and most of all, we kill nature. Animals want to live. What if we were living in a nice little tree, and the next thing we know, your tree is getting cut down by people who want to build more houses? If we, as a community, want to cut down trees, we want you to do limited cutting, and Shannon here is going to tell you about limited cutting.
Limited cutting means only cut what needs to be cut. If we need to make a hotel, we use the limiting cutting strategy. But if this strategy does not work, use metal or bricks instead. Trees are why we are alive. They carry oxygen, and we need oxygen to live. If we want to live healthy, don't cut down trees. Also, if we want to block the wind or have shade, don't cut down trees. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, ladies. Next, I have Jan Byrd.
Well, I don't know how I compete with the folks that have already spoken. This is Jan Byrd. I'm at 3310 221st Avenue, Southeast. And I agree with the previous two young ladies. And I also want to thank the Planning Commission and the staff for all the work on their policy piece for the Urban Forestry Management Plan. There's a lot of good information, and I'm still digesting it all. One thing I found that was missing, and I had to go do a little research, I had to go back and look at a newspaper, back in the day when we had one, for a little missing history. The city first passed an emergency tree ordinance, and it was approved October 14th, 2014, and was extended in April 2015, increasing the city's tree retention rate policy. Then on October 6th, 2015, the revised final tree ordinance was passed by City Council. So now, it's actually been five years just to get to the point of producing a policy for the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And this isn't even the implementation strategy. So I advise that the council vote for it, and ask that we fast-track an implementation phase. Can we get this done in one year? Waiting five years would not be acceptable. And some things I pulled out of what they had written, it says, "Currently, an estimated 16 city staff positions respond to or manage tree issues at least every week. Leadership within the three departments will collaborate on projects and share resources when necessary, but there's no formal policy on resource sharing. No department has a position designated as a full-time employee solely dedicated to urban forestry. City staff also use contractors of both tree care consulting and tree work to meet the casework workload demands." Another section says, "Ongoing enforcement challenges. The absence of consistent onsite monitoring and follow-through for trees, plantings, and mitigation is an ongoing challenge for the city's ability to effectively enforce its tree regulations. For small development projects, building inspectors are the only stopgap to ensure that tree retention, protection, and planting are enforced. However, the city's inspectors do not have the expertise to evaluate the conditions as it pertains to an arborist report, and given current staffing and workload levels, there's little time available to conduct follow-up inspections. Furthermore, issued building permits are valid for two years. So depending on the timing of construction, months can pass between inspections that are supposed to be ensuring compliance with the tree code." So I don't see how we can implement an Urban Forestry Management Plan without having to hire at least one staff person to coordinate it. And maybe we need an administrator, an arborist, and then a code enforcement staff person, and work as a team. I'm not sure where we are in the budget cycle, but we need to start building in the budget funding for adequate staffing to implement this plan now. And we should consider working with Forterra and become a green city like Redmond, Issaquah, Kirkland, and Snoqualmie. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Karen Herring.
I forgot my notes, so I'm going to wing it. First of all, go, James. I know how to make ice cream and have an ice cream maker, so if you want ice cream, you can call on me. Ditto everyone here on the urban forest tree thing. We need to get with Forterra. We have so many regional partners that want to work with all of the cities for this very problem, so let's call upon them. You also have resources right here in your city. They're your stewards, they're the wildlife community habitat organization, they are National Wildlife Federation. We're here for you. We're not here to brag, we're here to do something in our city. And I will help you, they will help you. And we want to keep the trees, we want to keep the understory that needs to not get missed in this plan. It needs to find a place, it needs to get put in there, and I mean now, because that's where your kids' animals are living, and they need to stay with us, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Rashni Patel.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members for giving me the opportunity to talk to you today. Hi, my name is Rashni Patel, and I'm a senior at Skyline High School. I've been living in the city of Sumamish for all my life, and I have seen so much growth and diversity in our community. Sumamish truly has a multicultural population, and it will only continue to grow. And as part of that, I want to be able to share the rich culture and heritage that Hinduism provides. So I'm here to discuss Diwali, the Hindu Festival of Lights. Technically, it's our Christmas and our New Year. This year, Diwali falls on October 27th. But you might be wondering why I'm telling you all of this. The reason is, my temple would like to cordially invite the mayor, deputy mayor, and respective city council members to come participate in our Diwali celebrations, held at the BAPS Temple in Redmond. In the spirit of inclusiveness and new relationships, we would like to share our most sacred day with the people of Seattle, and foster an understanding of the Hindu religion that millions around the world hold dear to them. We would also like to partner with the city of Sumamish in holding future charitable events that would benefit the Hindu and overall Sumamish population. Thank you for listening, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Yes, if you want to step up to the microphone.
Sharon Steinbiss, 24933 Southeast, 14th Street, Sumamish. I want to support and reiterate basically what Jan Byrd and Karen Herring said. There's no reason to drag our heels and put on the backburner this Urban Forest Management Plan. We need to get this show on the road. You might wonder what other cities in the area are doing. Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Seattle have all joined the Green Cities Partnership. There are something like 11 or 12 or more cities in the region that belong to this Green Cities Partnership. It started in Seattle. Forterra manages it. If you don't know, Forterra owns property in our backyard. They own and manage the Hazel Wolf Wetlands, which borders Soaring Eagle Park. It's a beautiful site. Forterra knows how to do this. They have this down. They've done it before. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. They partner with other volunteer groups, they have the resources. I don't know what it costs to join up with Forterra, that would be something to look into, but I would go on record as urging you to take that approach to getting this show on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue, Northeast, in Sumamish. I wanted to speak first about, I have two different docket items. Normally, I speak on stormwater, but you've passed the stormwater code, and unfortunately, the stormwater code doesn't apply if you don't hit a drainage threshold. So there are development regulations that are required that either don't exist or are in conflict with the comprehensive plan. So two dockets were submitted by myself and another Mary, who, we live in areas where we're seeing the result of no regulations or regulations that are in conflict with goals that the city has. So for text amendment to development regulations, number three, it's called geologic hazard areas, or geologically hazardous areas. The Department of Commerce is in charge of the Growth Management Act, and the Growth Management Act is something the city has to plan under. And even cities that don't plan under or opt out of the Growth Management Act, they still have to do critical areas, and jurisdictions that don't even have to do the GMA still have to do critical areas. And the problems with critical areas is steep slopes have never been properly defined in the city, and there is no code or regulation for them. And landslide hazards are not equivalent to erosion hazards, but geologic hazard areas are supposed to include erosion, landslide hazard, slopes, and seismic, which is earthquakes. And it needs to be done, it's a requirement of the GMA. Mercer Island just actually passed their geologically hazardous code. It's not writing a whole bunch of new code, it's taking what we have, making it work better, and these are the areas that you've had problems in. So it's something you really need to do. I haven't run into confrontation from staff. In fact, David Pyle actually had the words that we need a geologically hazardous areas code. So it's not changing what we have, it's using the maps and definitions and making everything work better together. So the only problem I have is, they've kind of said, "Well, maybe it could be done for the periodic update." I don't know how many others that is now, but I think the first critical areas ordinance was 2005, and then some adoptions in 2013. We've had problems with sloped areas for a long time, we can't wait any longer, so I hope that you will put that item and accept it for 2020. The second one is written by Mary Johnson and I. There are a lot of problems in the Inglewood area that she's seen. There's a number of different items. Some of them actually are very similar to Urban Forestry Management Code, but as you've heard others say, urban forestry management really only talks about trees, doesn't talk about understory, or landscaping, or what's there, how do you preserve it while you're constructing, setting clear limits, what needs to be there when you're done in a finishing condition, what about the wildlife? So her docket, which she submitted, and I helped submit, because it was a tough process, and also, some of the things we're doing are very linked. The docket really should be considered in its entirety. And then, you should fast-track the Urban Forestry Management Plan, do everything that you can, and if there's stuff that doesn't get done with that, then you have the dockets as backup. If it gets done in the Urban Forestry Management Plan, great, then it just makes the docket smaller, and you don't need to do it. But the process for Title 24A, 20 to 24A, for changing the comp plan was revised, and because of that, they have to do development regulations like this, and we've submitted two dockets we'd like you to consider and accept them both in their full entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. Lots of fun comments tonight, important comments, too, on the urban forestry plan. It's exciting. Just to have a couple of short comments, I think it was former council member Hayworth or Hay, I can't remember his name, Ron, somebody or other. His big fear was fire here. And I think we should have a little bit more firework for talking about in subsequent iterations of the plan. I'd put in a placeholder to look harder at what happens if there is a serious fire and how to manage. It shouldn't stop the plan now, but that's something that should be in there. And I really think the end game on the size of trees and the length of time that this plan looks at, I know now it's looking at a 20-year horizon. I think that's important, and to have actionable steps, but I think we should be looking at 100- or 200-year horizon. And I can't compete with James Eastman, but in the 1960s, I was going to go to Yosemite National, no, Kings Canyon, and it had a giant sequoia that you could drive through. Got ahold of a construction sign tossed to the side of the road that said, "Not a Through Street." And I got the yellow paint and took off the S and the T, so it said, "Not a Through Tree." Now, my execution was sort of poor, because we never got the sign up there, and we didn't put it up there as a joke. But the important thing is that trees really do get large, and I think there should be a real focus in the plan to think about size over time now. And the other thing I would add is that, oh, it was a good thing Karen Herring mentioned the understory. I agree with that completely as a forester. There's a sort of a cycle of how all the plants and sizes fit. And the other thing I would call attention to is that there's a spot in the plan that talks about acreage, and there's roughly 11,685 acres in the city that is zoned. Of those, R1, R4, R6, and R8 are 11,165, and R12, R18, and Centers are 520. That's about a 96 to 4%. I advise a strong idea placeholder for a subsequent plan to maybe have a different set of policies for the 500 acres, which would have different goals than the other 95. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to consent calendar. Would entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Did we get a motion? Nope.
I'll move.
Okay. All right, now it's been seconded and moved. Are we okay? We're okay. All right, very good. No comment? So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the consent calendar has been approved. Okay, now, next, we are going to move on to presentations and proclamations. We do have two proclamations this evening. We do have two proclamations this evening. The first is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I do want to recognize that we have Matt Gerald here. He is the Senior Corporate Relations Manager with the Susan G. Komen Foundation, so thank you for attendance. Did you want to say something before we dive into the proclamation? You're welcome to.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and the council and the city. The City of Samamish is home to one of our biggest fundraisers, Stand Up For The Cure on Lake Samamish. October is a huge month for us. We are all over the state, but just a reminder that one in eight women in their lifetime will hear the phrase "you have breast cancer." I worked for Komen because I was raised by a lot of strong women, and I want to fight and make sure that that doesn't happen. In 2016, Komen Puget Sound made a bold goal to reduce the number of breast cancer-related deaths by 50%. Currently, 42,000 lives are taken each year from this disease. And we fight this disease in two ways, by investing in a cure, and secondly, by being champions for health equity. We want to remove barriers for families. We want to go into underserved communities to make sure that people have access to mammograms, to healthcare, and to resources. So just thank you so much for your commitment to our cause. I've left some pink swag and resources in the back as well as my card. So if you guys need anything, please feel free to reach out, but thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you for being here this evening. So I'm going to read the Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October 29th, 2019. Whereas, a woman receives a diagnosis of breast cancer every two minutes, making the disease the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women in the U.S., other than skin cancers. Whereas, about 39,520 women and 450 men are expected to die due to breast cancer in 2011. Whereas, through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including an increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer from 74% to 98%. Whereas, the 2.5 million breast cancer survivors living in the U.S. today are a testament to courage, as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Whereas, screening rates are declining, and a recent study reveals that among the 1.5 million women studied over the age of 40 with health insurance, less than 50% receive the recommended annual screening. Whereas, various organizations are spreading breast cancer awareness to both men and women through outreach, education, and screening programs, and have empowered women with the life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms. And the county would like to support and encourage these ongoing efforts on behalf of our citizens. Whereas, throughout the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewed commitment to following recommended screening guidelines and to make a mammogram appointment. Whereas, through the month of October, organizations and health practitioners in this county are encouraged to use this opportunity to promote awareness about breast cancer and proper breast health, and to encourage annual mammograms. Whereas, public officials and citizens of this county are urged to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs that encourage annual mammograms. Now, therefore it be resolved that I, Mayor Kristi Malchow, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do by here proclaim October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Samamish.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. We do have another proclamation this evening. That is for the Power of Youth Month, and Councilmember Ritchie is going to read that proclamation for us.
Thank you. The proclamation is the Power of Youth Month, October 2019. Whereas, the City of Samamish recognizes the importance of communities protecting teens from alcohol in order to reduce the risks and dangers posed to teens and communities. And whereas, high school students who use alcohol and other substances are five times more likely to drop out of school or believe good grades are not important. And whereas, 27% of middle school students try alcohol before graduating from eighth grade, significantly increasing the risk that they will develop alcohol problems later in life. And whereas, teen alcohol use kills 4,300 people each year, more than all other illegal drugs combined. And whereas, the majority of kids say their parents are their primary influence when it comes to decisions about drinking alcohol, with peer influence a second. And whereas, the month of October is declared Power of Youth Month, as created by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, focuses efforts to encourage parents and caregivers to embrace their important role in influencing America's youth and their decisions about drinking alcohol, and encourages teens to take a stand against alcohol and other drugs. And whereas, in 2019, Mothers Against Drunk Driving encouraged parents to use Power of Parents program to create a sustained and prolonged conversation about underage drinking among middle school and high school students, and to use the Power of Youth program resources to encourage youth to make healthy choices. And whereas, to equip parents to talk to their teens about alcohol, Mothers Against Drunk Driving urges parents to use the tools to effectively talk to their children about alcohol to protect them. And whereas, we urge all citizens to join the local and national efforts to raise awareness and the importance of parents and teens talking together about alcohol to reduce the risks and dangers posed to teens and communities. Now therefore be resolved that you, Mayor Malchow, Mayor Kristi Malchow, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as the Power of Youth Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie, for reading that. Next, we have a presentation. This is on the Solid Waste and Recycling Report Briefing. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. We turn it over to Andrew, and we do have a special guest with us, Anthony. Thank you, Anthony, for joining us, and I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, fellow council members. I'm Andrew Zeggers, and to my right is Anthony Richkopf, who is our new management analyst for Public Works. And as the City Manager stated, we're here to do a brief presentation of our solid waste contract and updates on the recycling report. And with that, I will turn it over to Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Anthony Richkopf. I'm the new management analyst for Public Works, and I'm tasked with overseeing solid waste and recycling activities for the City of Samamish. I'm here tonight to provide you all an update on such activities. First, I will update you on King County's solid waste comprehensive plan and their plan to build a new recycling and transfer station in northeast King County. Second, I will provide you all an update on Samamish's five completed recycling events for 2019. And third, I would inform you of upcoming rate increases from both Republic Services and the county's hazardous waste management program. So first, an update on King County's solid waste, the comp plan. In 2018, King County's solid waste began development on a comprehensive plan update. This effort represented the first comprehensive plan update since 2001. Oops. Sorry about that. Per the comp plan, the county is required to periodically update their comprehensive plan and submit it for approval of member cities. The approval process requires cities representing 75% of the population of the county, excluding Seattle and Milton, who are a party to the agreement for approval. The City of Samamish approved the comp plan in a resolution on July 16, 2019, and as of September 13, 2019, over 80% have approved the comp plan. The plan is expected to be approved by the Washington Department of Ecology by the end of the year. The existing solid waste system serves over 1.5 million residents in the service area. The system serves 37 cities in King County, spans across 2,050 square miles, has a total of 10 transfer stations, six urban, four rural, and has only one landfill, the Cedar Hills landfill in Maple Valley. The two nearest transfer stations are in Houghton, in Kirkland, and the Factoria Transfer Station in Bellevue. So mainly due to population increase, most of the current county transfer stations are reaching capacity. Bow Lake was recently replaced in 2013, Factoria in 2017, and now the county is recommending a new northeast transfer station somewhere within the vicinities of Kirkland, Woodenville, Redmond, or Samamish, with a purpose of replacing the Houghton Transfer Station. Currently, the Houghton Transfer Station has passed its service life. It was built in the 1960s and lacks space for modernization. Per our recent NERTS meeting on September 23, 2019, King County is currently in the process of procuring a siting consultant, which is projected to be completed by April 2020, and they expect us to select a project siting method by quarter 1, 2022, with construction anticipated to begin sometime in 2026. Thus far, only Kirkland has expressed interest into hosting a transfer station. The cities have indicated that there are concerns with being a potential host city, such as traffic concerns and environmental concerns with regards to odor, sound, and construction debris. The cities have also indicated that wherever the transfer station is sited, that we would all like solid waste services to be located there, including hazardous waste. The Houghton Transfer Station currently does not support all solid waste services. The cities have also indicated that we would like the new transfer station to have a multipurpose functionality, similar to the North Seattle Station, which has solar panels, a kids' playing area, and meeting rooms. The county estimates that building a new transfer station would lead to a cost of about $133 million. Building a new transfer station would lead to a reduction of 32,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide and greenhouse gases by recycling. Currently, Houghton only allows a reduction of 2,165 metric tons. The new transfer station will be able to support all six levels of services, whereas Houghton meets none. The new transfer station will have eight-plus recyclable materials available, whereas Houghton only allows three, curbside mix, textile, and cardboard. Of course, the risk behind building a new transfer station is that it's going to be costly and time-consuming. Any questions so far?
Don't see any.
Moving on to our recycling events, there have been five completed recycling events in Samamish, four of which were overseen by Public Works. These recycling events are largely funded by grants from the Washington Department of Ecology and King County. Public Works uses these grants to hire a consultant to oversee these events. There were two events in April, one in August, one in September, and one this past weekend on Saturday. The mobile hazardous waste event in August was organized by King County. The presentation had to be submitted to the clerk prior to the October event, so the chart you have is slightly less than the one that I'm showing you right here. For the September recycling event, there were 2,133 carloads with over 172,000 pounds of recycled material. For the October latex paint and styrofoam event, there were 605 carloads with over 22,000 pounds of paint and 2,150 pounds of styrofoam. In total, we have recycled over 514,867 pounds of recyclable material with over 6,533 Getting more into detail, we have recycled over 121,000 pounds of scrap metal, 49,000 pounds of shredded paper, 590 TVs, 206 computers, donated more than 25,000 pounds of reusable household goods, recycled 288 mattresses, 51,000 batteries, and 25,000 pounds of cardboard. For 2020, we expect to have the same format for the recycling events, two in the spring, two in the fall, and one mobile hazardous waste event.
Yeah, the styrofoam event this past weekend was great. One of the things that was interesting, though, is that, as people probably know, there's different kinds of styrofoam, and so only certain types of styrofoam were accepted at the event, even though the folks that were there, they do recycle all the different types of styrofoam. So if we can look into expanding that so that all the types of styrofoam, because in talking with them, what typically happens is the people come, and if they can't recycle it at the event, they're just going to take it home and throw it away, because I think, I forget where it was you had to drive it to, but it was pretty far. And so if we can look into that and, you know, get back to us if there's a cost associated with it, if you could bring that back to us, that would be great. I think the recycling events are wonderful, and if we could do more, I think that would be even better. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll look into that with our consultant.
Lastly, an update regarding our upcoming rate increases from Republic Services and King County's hazardous waste management program. Republic Services notified us on September 25, 2019, that effective January 1st, 2020, residential and commercial customers will see an overall increase in rates of about 1.68%. As per our contract with Republic Services, Republic Services is permitted to modify their rates per the Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the Seattle-Tacoma-Bremerton metropolitan area. Republic Services will notify customers of this increase by November 15, 2019. We too will also notify the public via our regular communication channels. Attached are the rate increases for a few common items. Residential customers can expect to pay no more than a dollar difference than what they currently pay now. For a 32-gallon garbage cart, rates will increase 42 cents. For the 20-gallon garbage cart, rates will increase 44 cents, and for the commercial 45-gallon garbage cart, rates will increase 48 cents. Finally, moving on to our last update of the night, the county's hazardous waste management program will be implementing a 5.4% fee increase for hazardous waste collection, also beginning January 1, 2020. This fee increase will affect all King County residents and businesses with garbage accounts. It also affects those who self-haul their garbage to any King County transfer station. The annual 5.4% fee increase is through 2022 and was approved by the King County Board of Health in 2018 to address incremental impacts of inflation. Attached are the rate increases from the county. These fees are separate from Republic's CPI rate adjustment. This concludes my report for tonight. I'm happy to answer any further questions.
I don't see anything, so you must have covered everything very thoroughly. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do we need to move down here for the next set of items?
Yes, ma'am. So we'd like everybody to gather around the table, and we'll go through, I guess it'll be item eight or nine, and then after that, we can take a break, and everybody can come back up to the dice, and we can break the group up.
Thank you, Anthony.
There's more.
Okay, I'm going to get us started again here. Yeah, it's on. Okay. So first, we have a discussion on the proposed docket request for the 2020 comprehensive plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight and allowing us to have the meeting tonight. So with that, I'll turn it on over to staff. And Mary Ann will take the lead on it. We'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. I'm joined tonight with Sarah Astiri. We're both management analysts in the Community Development Department. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the 2020 docket. There's no action being requested tonight. The goal is really for you all to become more familiar with the requests and give an opportunity for you to ask questions. We wanted to start tonight with a quick review of the amendment process, just to give some context before launching into the proposals themselves. As you know, Simamish operates under the Growth Management Act, or the GMA, which is a state law that mandates coordinated and planned growth and land use planning. On screen, you see the 14 goals of the GMA. These goals feed into the elements for each city's comprehensive plan, including Simamish's. The comprehensive plan, along with state and federal regulations, are what guide the development of our code, including the development regulations. The annual docket determines the list of items that will go through review by the Planning Commission and City Council as possible amendments to either the comprehensive plan or the development regulations. And the annual docket process allows two types of amendments to be proposed, both of which you're probably already familiar with. There's text amendments to change the text of the comprehensive plan or the development regulations, such as the technical items that were recently presented for your consideration. And then there's also site-specific land use map amendments that change the future land use map in the comprehensive plan for an individual property or a small group of properties. And one of these types of amendments from the 2018 docket is currently in the process of being reviewed.
The docketing and legislative review process has changed slightly since last year with passing of Title 24A. So we wanted to spend a little time tonight reviewing those changes with you. We will also be going over the key dates for this year's docket cycle. The major change to the docket procedures initiated by Title 24A is that we posted online summaries of each docket request with the opportunity for public to submit their comments. We only receive comments related to docket request number one, and you can see those in exhibit number three. To align us with the state law, Title 24A added the ability to propose text amendment to development regulations. The big change here was that the process to change the future land use map was separated from the process to change the current zoning map. Separating these processes, we create a more straightforward process for both applicants and the staff. Now that we've talked about the process, we wanted to go over the key dates for this year's docket review. The first step in the process is deciding which proposals should be put on the docket for consideration in 2020. After tonight's joint session, Planning Commission will have a public hearing, and we'll be asked to make a recommendation to City Council on November 7th. City Council will have a public hearing and a resolution to set the docket on November 19th. Any docketed items will be considered during 2020's legislative review of individual proposals.
Okay, so now it's the moment you've been waiting for. We're going to take a look at the proposals that were received. The first proposal comes from the city and relates to the parcel that's currently home to Central Washington University, Simamish. I'll be presenting the information as it was submitted. And Doug McIntyre, say hi, Doug. Hi. He'll be answering questions that you might have at the end of the presentation. So this is a 21-and-a-half-acre, city-owned parcel on 228th Avenue Northeast, just outside of the Town Center boundary. And the city is proposing changing the future land use map of the parcel from Residential 1, or R1, to Community Business, or CB. The application states that this change could help address traffic issues and aligns well with regional planning documents that encourage higher density around transit. One other item to note is that this proposed change, along with the associated zone reclassification, would correct an inconsistency that's currently between the city's future land use map, where the property is listed as R1, and the current zoning map, where the property is listed as R6 interim. On screen is a comparison between the current zone and what's being proposed. I just want to note that these are summaries. And so for those who are interested, you can find more detailed information in Chapter 21A of the Simamish Municipal Code. R1 is primarily single-family detached residential of varying sizes with one dwelling unit per acre. And in comparison, Community Business allows up to 18 dwelling units per acre, with the residential units being part of a mixed-use site. The zone also allows retail and services, as well as some limited office space. The second proposal is a request submitted by two citizens to amend the Simamish Municipal Code Development Regulations. This request included many different text amendments. So to streamline the review, we organized the amendments into overarching themes that you see on screen. Sarah's going to be going over each theme in more detail, but I wanted to first direct your attention to Exhibit 4, which is the staff comment document. This document was created to give some context and some background information to assist in your decision-making, but I just wanted to clarify that these are not the staff recommendations. We'll be presenting the staff recommendations at the next Planning Commission and City Council meetings in November. Per Title 24A, the staff recommendation is going to be evaluating each request based on alignment with work plan items, the budget, and the staff availability to complete a full review of the proposal and consistency with the city's current policies and programmatic priorities. So now I'm going to hand things over to Sarah, who's going to be discussing each theme and the corresponding amendments in more detail.
On the screen, you will see two text amendments related to transfer of development rise, TDRs. The applicant states that these amendments are needed because TDRs are currently allowed from erosion areas, but are needed more widely, especially in areas dealing with landslide and other geo-hazards. Staff comments related to these amendments are included in Exhibit 4 on Page 1. We just wanted to clarify that the TDR program is currently an active program. Text amendment related to development issues are shown on the screen. The applicant submitted these amendments due to concern about new construction and clearing and grading in areas with steep slopes. Exhibit 4 contains the staff comments related to these amendments. You can find them on Pages 1 and 2. On the screen, you see three text amendments related to ecosystem preservation. The applicant submitted these amendments due to concern about how piecemeal development is degrading wildlife corridors and pollinator habitat. Staff comments related to these three amendments are included in Exhibit 4 on Page 3. The text amendment related to tree and vegetation retention are shown on the screen. The applicant submitted these amendments due to concern about Simamish tree canopy, which includes vegetation and understory. Please see Exhibits 4, Pages 3 and 4 for staff comments related to these amendments. And finally, the third docket request is another citizen request. This docket request aimed to combine landslide, erosion, a steep slope, and seismic hazard areas into a geolocatic hazard area. Once this hazard area has been created, the applicant would like a review of development regulation to ensure proper protection of people and property. Before we open things up for question, we wanted to quickly talk about the next steps. The Planning Commission public hearing will be on November 7th. City Council will have a public hearing before deliberation and a resolution to set the docket on November 19th. Our job during this process is to make sure you have the information you need to make your decision. Please ask questions tonight, call or email us, and we will work together to answer all of your questions. With that said, we open things up for questions. Thank you.
So if you have questions, excuse me, if you just put your tent card up, and that way I'll know you want to speak. We have absolutely no questions, apparently. That's easy. Very good.
Great. We'll see you all in November.
We're going to move on to the next item, which is a discussion on the draft urban forest management plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission members, council. We have another set of staff. So as we get prepared, I'll turn it over to Kelly, and she'll get started. And Kelly, you can introduce your guest.
I'll awkward second here to bring up our presentation. Good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, I'll be presenting Planning Commission's recommended urban forest management plan. With me tonight is Ian Scott with Davy Resource Group, who is our consultant on this planning project. Actually, let's do this. There we go. Okay, hold on. This is the wrong presentation. This is next on the agenda. Okay, here we go. That looks familiar. Okay. We'll start off tonight's presentation with a general overview of the planning process and the development of the urban forest management plan. This will be followed by a brief review of the plan, including what do we have and what do we want. We'll spend most of our time tonight discussing how do we get there, which is the section of the plan that is the goals and objectives. And we'll conclude the presentation by going over our next steps. In 2015, the city updated its comprehensive plan. An underdirection of the City Council included the development of the UFMP as a policy goal. After the comprehensive plan was adopted, City Council allocated funds in the 2017-18 budget for this planning effort with the goal of bringing all urban forestry activities under one vision and one set of policies to help the city measure progress, prioritize resources, and care for the urban forest. When we get direction such as the comprehensive plan goal and policy that I just showed you, the first step in the planning process is to develop a vision statement, which describes what the urban forest plan desires to achieve over the next 20 years. Once we have our vision statement, we continue with the planning process by developing and adopting the program goals and underlying objectives. And that is really the focus of tonight's presentation, because without the consensus on the plan's goals and objectives, then we can't move forward with identifying specific implementation strategies and performance measures. To develop goals and objectives that will guide how we implement the UFMP, we need to understand what we have and what we want. This includes inventory, research and analysis, and engaging our community stakeholders. Starting in late 2017, the city partnered with the University of Washington to provide an assessment of the extent and distribution of the canopy cover within Simamish. At the time the assessment was underway, the city's consultant, Davy Resource Group, began researching and reviewing countless planning documents and studies, as well as interviewing internal and external stakeholders. This was all followed by a public engagement campaign, which we'll touch on later in the presentation. The information and feedback received was integrated into a rough draft of the plan, which was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council in the fall of 2018. These meetings focused on the draft plan's discussion of the urban forest threats and opportunities, the inclusion and exclusion of certain background topics, and an assessment of whether the proposed strategic goals address the primary issues facing the city's urban forest resource. We received a lot of great feedback at these meetings, which we took and incorporated into a final draft plan, which was presented to the Planning Commission for their final review earlier this summer. Once the urban forest management plan is adopted, we'll start work on the implementation strategies, which includes identifying potential actions, priority ranking, budget and schedule impacts, and department lead, since this is a citywide program. With that, I'll pass the presentation over to Ian, who will be giving a brief overview of what's included in the plan. As a reminder, an in-depth review of this work was completed last fall, so we won't be going over all the data analysis and research that went into developing the UFMP.
Thank you, Kelly. So the urban forest management plan, it serves a variety of purposes. But I think the key purpose here that I want to articulate here is it's meant to set the vision and the value and benefits of trees to the city. It's going to look at, it looks at the city at a strategic level and sets a policy guide for managing and enhancing and growing trees in the city's Simamish over the next 20 years. The plan also establishes benchmarks to measure long-term success, enhance health and sustainability, increase regional benefits. And lastly, it identifies resources that provide and support the care and management of our urban forest. So what do we have? Well, the knowledge that the city has about the forest comes from a 2015 tree canopy assessment, which measured 48% of the city is covered by a tree canopy, which, as you can see by the graphic on the lower right, is more than most cities in the region. Our urban canopy is almost evenly split between deciduous trees at 49% and coniferous trees at 51%. We also have information about the canopy fragmentation. And so this is, because you've done this urban tree canopy assessment, the city can now look at ways to grow and improve the quality of the urban forest. You know, as Community has mentioned, issues around understory and wildlife, forest fragmentation, and choosing to plant and grow canopy that enhances or reduces forest fragmentation is one method to improve the quality of the overall urban forest. Another part of the urban tree canopy assessment established priority planting opportunities. So we know in and around the city where trees can be planted, and they've been ranked according to their environmental benefits of a steep slope, forest fragmentation, reduction in urban heat island effect. And although these maps on the screen aren't so easy to read in detail, you can see, you know, there's a lot of the high, very high and high priority planting areas tend to be around steep-sloped areas where there aren't any canopy currently. Looking a little further at what we have, we also, not only did we look at the urban forest as an asset that the city manages and maintains, but the staff that's involved at the city. We looked at ways and presented in the plan ways to optimize and improve efficiency within the city. You have three departments that currently touch trees. You have three departments that currently touch trees. I've lost where I was at. There, yeah, there's, you know, community development, public works, and parks and There's also, so there's those three staff groups working within the city, and then outside the city, there is, as we heard mentioned, there's a handful of groups, and they're increasing, but anywhere from the broad, broad level of organizations like Futurewise and MRSC on your left, to local groups that can help plant trees, manage invasives, such as Sammamish Stormwater Stewards, Wildlife Habitat Project, or Native Plant Stewards. All of these groups are working already without the plan, but with the plan, they're now, their energy can be, can be put in aligned with the overall city's vision. We also solicited community feedback, and through that process, we had stakeholder interviews, community workshops, commissions and council input, and educational pop-ups, and surveys, and all of these were designed to, again, engage the community, because a lot of people will ask, why? Why are trees important? And this is the plan that says, why are trees important to this community, and what are we going to do about it? And with that, I'll turn it back to Kelly, and we can review the goals and objectives.
Okay, as I, as I previously mentioned, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to focus on the goals and objectives, which will guide the future implementation of the UFMP. The goals and objectives are summarized on page 55 through 58 of the plan. The urban forest management plan goals and objectives are divided into three separate buckets: urban forest sustainability, municipal operations, and community collaboration and engagement. With the next series of slides, I'll provide a brief description of each category, and then ask council to provide feedback on the goals and objectives listed on the handout that has been provided to you all. More specifically, we would like to know, are the goals and objectives providing sufficient guidance for the development, for developing potential implementation strategies and actions? Is there anything missing? And lastly, is there anything you feel needs to be changed? This is also the opportunity for council to ask questions of the commission or staff about any specific goal or objective. And one last thing, I want to point out the community feedback's highlights included on the sheets in front of you. This is a reminder of what we heard from our community and stakeholder groups. This feedback, along with all of what do we have information, is what influenced the development of these goals and objectives. Okay, on to the first broad goal, urban forest sustainability. Associated goals are intended to improve the urban forest resource over the next 20 years by developing detailed expectations for the urban forest. To accomplish these goals, the most common tactic is to increase the amount of information the city maintains about its urban forest resource. This includes activities like routine tree canopy assessments and maintaining a public tree inventory, both of which are fundamental to management. Now, open it up for discussion, as well as receive your feedback on the goals and objectives. Do they provide sufficient guidance? Anything missing? Or do any changes need to be made?
When we set goals, we typically see some threshold to try to maintain. I thought we were going to try to have a percentage of coverage, and I don't see that. So I just throw that out for discussion. Was that something that was discussed, ignored, decided against?
I think, as an early response here, we didn't propose anything beyond maintaining the canopy as is, only because it's, without a planting plan, you know, there's, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, and it's, and it's a lot more complicated to grow the canopy in Sammamish, where you already have a lot of trees. You know, in a lot, for a lot of cities that I've worked for, where they have lower canopy, like 25%, and a potential of 40% or 50%, they're, they're having to dig out, and so they are establishing substantial benchmarks to achieve. I think, I think within, within the city, you know, unless, unless the council wants to direct it differently, you know, that would be, it would be appropriate to at least try to maintain it over the, you know, the next 10 years of this plan, do another canopy assessment, and see if, see if the code has been effective, see if the protections that are in place have been effective, and then make change.
I don't disagree with that. The development we've had over a few years, I wonder if we should try to get back to where we were versus where we are right now. I'll just throw that out.
And actually, if I can add, so if you look on page 55 or that first sheet of the materials that I have provided for you, urban forest goal UA1, maintain overall canopy cover. Objective A is to develop and adopt an overall canopy goal. So that's something that, as a potential implementation action, council can direct us to say, hey, we want to adopt a goal. Can you please look at the historic data, the GIS data, and give us some options to consider? So I think that would be actually a fantastic implementation strategy that we, we pin down.
Maybe I could just, can I just kind of add a little bit to Tom's question? Part of the discussion at the time, and it's been a while since we've talked about this, but as I recall, part of the discussion is when you look at that chart, Sammamish is really only second to Issaquah of the cities that were kind of evaluated. And we thought that we could set a goal as part of this framework exercise, but it's hard when you're kind of close to the top with those numbers to determine what is an appropriate goal. If you're halfway in the middle of the pack, it's easier to set a goal, because you want to be closer to the, to the front of it. So what we did was, we said, we're not sure how to set a goal right now, when we're already, at least from a number standpoint, in a good position, but we do want to have an objective to set a goal, and we put that as a, as a part of our implementation strategy expectation, so that as we continue this discussion into what can we do, what should we do, what are other cities doing, what's appropriate, maybe that'll help inform us a little bit better about how to set a goal. That was one of the reasons we didn't say, you know, X percent, which perhaps is, without a little bit more information, is unrealistic, and then we've created a goal that will be very difficult to achieve, because we're already have a pretty good canopy. Of course, on the other side, as just you said, with development, there's also an aspect to that, that you want to have a target to not fall below. But we thought the implementation phase would be the right phase to do that.
So I have one quick comment, and it may not be totally appropriate here, since I know this is a plan, but as I look to the, increase the amount of information the city maintains, I think that's certainly a great goal to have, and one thing I just want to plug in here before it escapes my, my thought, which is, one of the things I think we need to be maintaining, and I know laminated root rot specifically is mentioned in the plan, but I would really like to see quickly after adoption of this, is policy that says that we need to maintain a log, and we need to work with our development community, that when they start taking down trees, that we are given the option to come on and look at those roots, and start mapping out where we have laminated root rot, because that will help us to identify where you don't want to go back and replace it with more dug fur, that will then get laminated root rot again, and perish. And that, I would like to see us have that resource available to us, so that we can partner with developers that are taking out trees, and we can have that as something for the future.
Absolutely. And Mayor Mao Chow, you, I believe, brought this up last year when we were reviewing the rough draft of the plan, and one of the options that we've pinned, and actually, it's highlighted in Exhibit 1 of the question-answer matrix, questions that we received, or comments that we received that landed more to an implementation strategy, we actually highlighted them in yellow. And so one of your comments from last year was, we, you know, with development applications, we receive arborist reports, and if there's an indication of laminated root rot as a justification to bring a tree down, we should actually be mapping those parcels, and having that on our property tool on the website that says, this parcel is known to have laminated root rot. So it does influence our decisions regarding replacement trees, the type of trees, and help kind of actually future guidance of development regulation updates. So it's a really great suggestion, so thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
A couple of things. One thing that I would like to see added as a goal would be wildlife corridors, that we identify and encourage wildlife corridors, and connectivity. And that may cross over, I don't know if that starts to cross over into the pro-plan, but I feel like these two things are pretty interconnected in that regard. And I think that a number of my comments are probably more around implementation strategy, so I will just send those in when we talk about things, about how we achieve those things, like increasing the amount of land we purchase. Although I don't know if this item falls into a goal or a strategy, but trying to find ways to incentivize the trees, so we could certainly look at things like increasing our tree retention policy across the board, that's one option, but another thing to look at is, how do we incentivize people to increase how many trees they retain? Because I think that that can often work to everyone's advantage as well. So I don't know if that's an implementation strategy item or more of a goal. And I would just like to echo a couple of things, one about the staffing levels. Maybe we could have some goals in there around what kind of staffing we think we need, because it is a little bit alarming that we don't have staffing in a number of areas. And I think that we have seen on council where there are infractions around, you know, developers with tree retention, and that if we had more staff who could be staying more on top of that and working with the development community, we could avoid some of those issues that have occurred. And then finally, I'd like to echo something that Deputy Mayor Moran brought up previously, which is that I feel like this is kind of just a first step in an environmental master plan, and I would love to see us put a stake in the ground to say, how do we look at an all-up environmental master plan? And that may be where we have to talk about the understory, but given that that may take a while, it may be worth having a goal around the understory in here, because having healthy trees requires a healthy forest, and a healthy forest requires a healthy understory. So I wouldn't mind seeing some, some goals in there around the understory. Thanks.
Can I comment on, the one, the one thing that I want to comment on about understory, you know, we're talking about this urban forest, the key word there is urban. There's a lot of trees that are, they're overstory, or the understory is a sidewalk, or the understory is a rooftop, or, you know, so that, so when, when I think of understory and management of that, I'm thinking more in natural areas, and those, those can, it's perfectly appropriate to develop tactical plans for certain natural areas to make sure that they, that the quality of that, that forest condition improves, and that, and, you know, the, the actions that you might take then would be removal of invasives, or, you know, planting of appropriate native species, and that's where a company like, the nonprofits like Forterra come in, and they help you triage those, those sites, and get rid of the ivy, and improve the wildlife habitat.
I don't disagree. I know that we all have a lot of different categories, if you will, but I feel like if we don't put it in here as a goal, then it's never going to become an action plan for staff. So I feel like we have to put that stake in the ground.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I'm going to circle back to, is that better? I'm going to circle back to the root rot question, and back to when we did our first tree count. Five years ago, that's a very long time. So I'm thinking about the tree count, if it was done five years ago, and I'm thinking of the changes in our, in our canopy in five years. Have we been updating it over that time? Have we been taking into account the trees that are gone from the root rot? And has there been changes? I mean, the percentage that you're saying we have, is that the percentage of the count that you took five years ago? That's not an updated?
No. When we, when the University of Washington started their assessment, the data that they had, the most current data was the 2015 LiDAR. We do have current LiDAR, that's the 2018, and I do believe King County, our interlocal with King County for the regional, I'm not going to reference this correctly, LiDAR flyover is, is being planned for 2020. So there is current information. There is a cost, though, for taking that, that aerial imagery with the data that we need and converting it into GIS layers that can then be analyzed. And, for example, we paid the University of Washington $60,000 to do that assessment, that, that conversion. So we have the information. If we wanted to update it and keep it updated, there is a cost associated with that, and we would need council direction to do that. If I can just quickly address some of Pam's comments, or Councilmember Stewart's comments, and point to a couple of goals here that I think address what she's acknowledged. First is, how do we incentivize tree, tree retention? I'm actually going to move a little bit ahead here, so bear with me. Municipal goal code, M6, I don't have my glasses. Okay. If you refer to municipal goal M6, review tree ordinances every five to 10 years. Their objective D does state, consider revisions to tree removal and replacement requirements on development properties to incentivize retention of healthy trees and removal of unhealthy trees, so that it could be edited or expanded, however you would like to amend that. I am going to go back here real quick to UA1 regarding enhance canopy, so urban forest goal UA1, maintain overall canopy cover. Objective B, enhance canopy in key areas. One of those areas would be wildlife corridors. So we do have that GIS data that we can analyze and include as a priority planting area if we come up with an overall city planting plan. So we do have some goals that address that, and can actually lead to very specific implementation actions, as recommended by Councilmember Stewart.
Can I get it?
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Valderrama.
On what, I thought this plan is going forward, I think the first proposal is in 2015, and I think the staff will have the work, and it will use it into a model. Couple of points that came out, in no particular order, Councilmember Mao Chow, and I think Stewart had mentioned root rot. I thought there was another fungus that was also attacking another tree, and so we should add that one to the list, if there are others, to be identifying those and mapping that were attacking a different type of tree. There is no kind of warrant, so it's not just limited to root rot, I think that's a very public and very specific issue. Second, maybe we have the public comment made by Paul Skikney about being conscientious and taking a look at the implications as we go through on fire, and this is something that's now becoming more an issue with Eastside Fire and Rescue, to the east side, that they want our cities to start being more conscientious, especially as temperatures are getting warmer, and something that the last city manager, Ray Patterson, had also raised on a couple of occasions. One of the consequences of having such a high tree canopy is that we have to start watching out for implications, and how we can avoid a climate change or natural disaster, and keep our public safety issues into effect. And then, on the other issue that was being talked about, as far as tree retention, and we talked about the ordinance of these development properties, as I recall in 15, the city of N Hoover, British Columbia, we talked about, you hear, actually, it's not development properties that are taking down the majority of the trees, it's the existing property that are taking down the majority of the trees. And city after city have been able to show the vast majority of tree losses on existing properties, and maybe it's more on the enforcement side of our ordinance, is the replacement of trees and the inability of the trees being kept. So I'd like So I'd like to see if we can look at either way, enforce or review the licenses and the rest keeping of that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Kelly, I hope you were able to capture that. Councilmember Valderrama, it's pretty garbled. It sounds like you're underwater.
So this is what I think I heard, and then I'll address those. The first one is, in response to Mayor Mauchow's suggestion on mapping and tracking laminated root rot, that we should also be tracking other diseases impacting our urban forest. And absolutely, when a development proposal is submitted and a developer would like to remove trees because they indicate that they're unhealthy, they need to justify why they are unhealthy, and we can definitely expand that past laminated root rot. Wildfire management planning, actually, on page 37 of the plan, there is a brief summary. This is a very, as you can imagine, vast topic with a lot of expertise. That was not included in the original scope for this plan, but we did acknowledge it. I do also want to point to urban forest goal UA2 on page 55 in the first page of your handout. Increase and promote resilience in the urban forest. Develop recommendations to, and this is objective B, or D, develop recommendations to address defensible space around homes and in neighborhoods. Reduction of fuel loading in the urban forest. And selective thinning of urban forests, particularly along city right-ofways. So we also are indicating, yes, we need to look at, you know, all threats, not just wildfire, but, you know, we do have storms, high winds, that do impact our right-ofways and our access out and into the city. And that needs to be further explored. I will also, on this topic, let's see here, refer to you to, is that M1? M1, maintain urban forest management plan alignment with other city plans and policies. This is on page 56 of the plan. Objectives B through D. B, collaborate with city staff experts to develop and establish a risk management policy for trees. C, include urban forestry concerns in emergency response plans. And D, work with the state and county agencies to develop wildfire prevention plans. And I will note, we do have an emergency manager here who is very excited to get going on this work, and we will be tapping that resource quite a bit as we work on our implementation strategies.
Okay. And the other two points are, one, on the ordinance for development, the ordinance on not just development properties, but on existing properties and their retaining the trees. And so that's the greatest loss to the city, even more than new developments.
So I'm going to look at M6, review tree ordinances every five to 10 years, as the goal.
Well, and there's a second part, is the actual enforcement. We have to be looking at how we're enforcing it, and that could be as a subset, but...
Let's see, do we have enforcement? Okay, we will, we will look at enforcement and see where we can add that within the existing municipal operation goals and objectives, and bring that back to you prior to the public hearing for consideration. I'm not seeing anything.
All right, thank you. One last...
Okay.
All right, well, thank you. And one last thing, on page 60, I like the monitoring and measuring results as we go forward. I think that's going to be critical. We had talked about having University of Washington or a third party similar to that being, doing that activity, so I think gets advantageous. And then finally, on the same page to the far right, I appreciate you're putting my niece's picture with my dog there.
That's a good-looking dog.
That's the small one.
That's the small one. I do want to note, and I know it's in here because we talked about this quite a bit with the Planning Commission, was the need for an annual State of the Urban Forest report. And that is, when city council directs us on what urban forestry strategies they would like us to work on as part of our work program, at the end of the year, we can report out what we did and what those measurements are, and continue that with reporting how we are doing. This is a way to reinforce that this plan is not sitting on a shelf gathering dust once this is adopted, because this is such an important planning document to this community. And it wouldn't do it justice without reporting back on how we're doing. So, annual report card.
All right, thank you.
So Kelly, I'm glad you mentioned specifically emergency management, because that was one of the questions I forgot to ask originally, was, we have a very small, you know, paragraph in there relative to wildfires. And so I just wanted to be sure, on that goal M1, I almost feel like we need to have "and partners" on the very end of the goal, because we mentioned state and county, but we don't mention Eastside Fire and Rescue?
Yeah.
Nor do we mention other cities. And we border Issaquah, we border Redmond, and we need to be working with them, not just the county and the state.
I think that's a great suggestion. I'd also like to add, FireWise, which is a federal program, that I think we should also include, so federal, county, local, and as well as Eastside Fire and Rescue. I can put that, those suggestions in there for the November 4th.
Okay, that'd be great, because in that paragraph on wildfire, we talk about it as if the only threat is the fact that we're right up against the urban growth area, and that somehow the wildfire is just going to come from the unincorporated area. And I think that is an unrealistic state of affairs. We have the bog fire that was inside the urban growth area in our own city.
Yeah.
So as an example. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. A couple more things, I think, on M6, and I'm sorry I didn't mention these earlier, but, and I think it's just to get a little more crisp on it, is creating goals to either improve or create incentives and assistance for replacing trees, kind of instead of charging permits. So I think you talk about sort of public education and outreach, and I think that's important, because I don't think homeowners are always aware of what is required when they have trees. But particularly when homeowners have trees that are dying or a threat, to find ways to help them replace those trees so that the right things happen, right? When we have permit requirements and those cost money, and then you have, you know, requirements to replace it with certain things, that sometimes encourages people not to follow the process. And I think in this case, we'd rather make it easier for them to follow the process. The other part, you kind of touch on this, but I don't think we really state it, which would be to increase tree buffers for neighborhoods, right? So if we can have more tree buffers between our streets and our neighborhoods, I think that would be good. That may fall under development regulations, but we may need goals in here to help drive those regulations.
Okay.
And then the other part, and again, I meant to mention this before, but wildlife management. So as we talk about having wildlife corridors and some of that connectivity, I think we should have goals around managing the wildlife. So I see that as kind of two things. One is, if there is going to be any sort of development going on, and there are significant wildlife in that area, making sure that that wildlife gets relocated, right? And that we don't just sort of take down trees or remove some sort of habitat, and then suddenly you've got the animals running around not knowing what to do. And then we also have some challenges with things like bears and wild cats, or bobcats, where while we love our wildlife, we also love our dogs and children. And having bobcats in our backyards may not be the best thing for the dogs, the children, or the bobcats. So those may be some goals that we, again, some of these are tangential, but since we don't have another plan to put them in, this may be a good place to kind of put some goals around that.
Thank you. Okay. And so I'd like to move on, if possible, to the municipal operations. If, unless there's any more questions or comments regarding the goals for urban forest sustainability. Okay. So the municipal operations. These goals are intended to drive improvements in city policy and practices by improving efficiencies and alignment of efforts within city departments. And we've touched on a few of those here tonight already. The common tactic for accomplishing these goals center around developing policies that promote routine tree inspections and formalized tree management strategies for city-owned trees. These goals encourage the city to improve its awareness and mitigation of tree hazards and eliminate barriers to effective urban forest management. So you will find municipal operations on page 56, and they do continue on to page 57. So this is, impact your city staff, and these are goals around city staffing, updating regulations, and so forth.
Yeah, I think we kind of jumped into these already.
Yeah. Was there anything else you would like to?
You put up slide one, and we went all the way.
I know. Okay. Great. Okay. Onto community collaboration and engagement. Associated goals build stronger community engagement and public participate in urban forest stewardship. Common actions include coordinating with the public and encouraging participation of citizens and businesses to align with the city's vision for the urban forest. And with that, are there any comments, suggestions, questions regarding these goals?
Commissioner Crandall.
I didn't know when to bring this up, but maybe this is appropriate. And I try to be brief, but I have just thought of a few hundred other things. We could, community engagement and community awareness. Wanted to point out that October also is Urban and Community Forest Month. So a lot of us didn't know that, looking around. So talking about things we don't know, I'm a good person to speak with, but the hidden life of trees appears three, four times a year on the most read books, both locally and nationally. And in there, there's a lot of things. And we talked about the negativeness mapping of root rot, which I really gladly hear the mayor and the deputy mayor both kind of talk about that. We really want to, thinking about what Peter said in his book, map the good things, too. Those healthy trees, those different trees, and just, so how many nut trees are in town? How many fruit trees are in our city? And I think I'll close with this. We probably could use some of those other public entities that could provide service to us, not just the city do all this investigation, mapping, categorizing. We talked about fire management, and they're talking about 18 feet between the tree canopies, and no tree canopy being any closer than five feet to house. These are different municipalities do this, but there's a lot to learn about trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you all for your questions and feedback, and I will echo my colleague Sarah Astere's comments at the conclusion of the 2020 Docket presentation. We will go back and we will watch the video. We'll take that information and put together an amendment matrix. But I do encourage the city council to please reach out to me if you would like to provide more clarifying language, so that I can put that into the amendment matrix, or any other changes to the plan that you would like amended. I will provide that matrix, along with the plan, for the November 4th public hearing for your consideration, as well as public comment. And hopefully, on November 4th, we can pass a motion to adopt the plan. But if you need more time, we have scheduled a conversation for November 19th to further discuss the deliberations. And our hope is that we can get this adopted this year, so we can get going on those implementation strategies, because there's a lot of really great ideas, exhibit one, that we want to start working on and getting those in the implementation strategy. So with that, if there's any last questions, we can move on to the next very brief presentation.
We have a few more. Hold on. Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to thank everybody for all the work, both the Planning Commission and the staff, for all the work that's gone into this, because I went back and I tried to watch some of the meetings, so that I had as many questions answered as I could, and just the amount of work that everybody's put into it. So I wanted to thank, make sure I thanked everybody for that. And you can use my backyard to start collecting animals and stuff.
Okay. Councilmember Russ.
Yeah, on, one of those charts showed how high-performance samamish in Issaquah were against their peers. And obviously, zoning and ordinances contribute to that. But also notice on page eight of the document, there's a budget for tree care. Is there any correlation of tree care and helping, what part, how much does that contribute to high performance tree care?
I don't know if I have a good answer to that one. You know, the municipal budget and how much you spend on the city's urban forest, I mean, that can vary based on expectations of, you know, condition and the amount of, you know, street and public trees that the city manages. Yeah, I don't know that there's any strong correlation that's out there.
Commissioner Amato.
I'm not entirely sure how much it matters, but on C3, I noticed that we call out specifically $2 per capita and create a Citizens Tree Board to pursue and maintain Tree City USA status. But I don't know how often Tree City changes their requirements for what it takes for us to reach that. So it might make sense to remove some of the specifics and make it more broad, so that we can, don't have to update that every time they change their...
Well, I can't say that it's been $2 per capita for a long time. You know, so they may very well change it, but that's where we differentiated that as an objective rather than a goal. So if the goal is to pursue and maintain Tree City USA status, and they make a change, you know, the objective could be, would be adjusted down the road. It really is, and it's, and they've always, Tree City USA has always built that as a pretty low benchmark for cities to buy into. Majority of cities with an urban forestry program easily go above $2 per capita in terms of their spending.
Commissioner Baughman.
I'd just like to add, one of the things that we found as a Planning Commission working through this is, this is a particular topic that has certainly a lot of opinions and a lot of passion in the city. And I would hope that as we move forward, we keep in mind that we need to value that, and also, although I don't like the overused word, leverage and utilize those people in our community that are passionate about this topic to figure out things that we can do, how to accomplish things. We saw a lot more people than we usually see at our Planning Commission meetings about this topic, because there's a lot of passion in the city about the trees. And it's a real opportunity for us to bring a group of people together in the community, as a community, to accomplish something that's important to almost everyone in the community. And I hope that we can use a little bit of momentum to go into the implementation strategies, which is really the meat and potatoes of this, to do something that's good for our community and for our city. So looking forward to lots of fun late-night meetings talking about that.
Not to pile on, but where the deputy mayor started with the thank yous, I know that staff has put a lot of time and energy into this, that the Planning Commission has as well. Hopefully, it's been a labor of love for everyone, but also for the public, who contributed comments to the Planning Commission to roll up into this plan. So thank you all. Thank you. Okay. I think we're jumping into the next item here. This is a discussion on the draft amendments to the environment and conservation element of the comprehensive plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Commission. Kelly, are you ready?
Oh, yes. And I have the right presentation this time.
So, with that, everyone, I turn it back over to Kelly.
Yeah. I think you're good. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Here we go. Now, I have to have the right script in front of me. This will be brief. This is a review of the proposed amendments to the environment and conservation element of the comprehensive plan. As you remember, in 2018, the planning commission recommended and the city council approved placing a proposal on the annual docket to amend the environment and conservation element of the city's comprehensive plan to include references to the UFMP. The First Amendment is to update policy EC 1010 in Volume 1 to revise and remove outdated references. And the Second Amendment is to add an urban forest section to Volume 2 of the environment and conservation element. This includes text summarizing the purpose of the UFMP and adding a dynamic reference to the adopted plan. As with this plan, we'll be back on November 4th for a public hearing. City council will not be taking action at this meeting. Instead, you will be deliberating and considering these amendments as part of the consolidated annual amendment ordinance in early 2020. Any questions?
Nope. That's an easy one.
Was that the shortest presentation in this year?
We like it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think we'll take a break here and move ourselves back up there. Planning Commissioners, thank you for joining us here this evening. You didn't even get out the door. Okay. So, item 10. This is a discussion, this is a draft ordinance amending Section 20.05.040 of the Sammish Municipal Code relating to the disclosure of limited liability company interest for land use applications. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. At Deputy Mayor's request and working with Mike Kenyon, we have brought back this draft ordinance wording. We also have had some information there for you. There was also an email sent to Council explaining some of the issues. So, basically, for tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mike, we're looking for direction, information on should we pursue this? And then, if we do pursue it, we'll pursue the legal ramifications of it, look at everything, and then, again, possibly bring this back for adoption or a public hearing, right, for the ordinance?
So, I don't have much more to offer, Council. This is, as you know, Deputy Mayor Moran's initiative, and we put together this as a sort of hopefully useful form of a starting point, but we don't have direction from the Council about whether this is something you want to pursue, or if so, in what shape. So, just really looking for your discussion and direction on that.
Councilmember Horner.
Sorry. I want to weigh in that I am supportive of going down this path, but yet, I do understand the concern on the legal constitutionality. That's hard for me to say. But I think it's important to have the transparency, which is why I think this is so important to try to have. And I think that in and by itself is probably sufficient reason so that the citizens, the residents, the council, and staff, and the people involved are aware of who is involved with these applications versus just some entity that has no face or backing behind it, to know who that entity is as a person. And I know in Washington, when you bring a case as a corporation, they ask for significant shareholders, not all shareholders, to be fair. But they want to know who's involved in that corporation lawsuit. So, to me, this is a similar concept of getting the people behind this corporate entity, the LLC, which is nothing more than a corporation with a different name, if you will, or a partnership. So, I think it's important. So, I'm very much supportive of it. If we have other reasons to do it, great, but to me, transparency should be sufficient.
Don't have any more? Oh, Councilmember Ross.
Without being redundant, I think Councilmember Horner said it pretty well. I think we should pursue it, see what we come up with.
Assuming that our esteemed city attorney needs direction from a majority of council to continue to pursue this, I would agree with what my fellow council members have said, just from the air of transparency, it might be worth exploring.
To clarify, Mayor, you did say esteemed, is that correct?
I did. Deputy Mayor Moran.
I do want to, as we're looking at it, though, I do want to keep in mind that the comment that came in tonight is something that I had been thinking about as well from the very beginning. So, it may be that, you know, you don't want somebody who's building a barn, for example, I don't know if he's still here or not, somebody who's building one house, somebody who's... So, it might be starting with somebody who's doing a long plat, or somebody who's doing something larger to, you know, it might not be every application. It might be so... So, anyway, put some time into thinking of what it should be, and maybe it doesn't have to go in the very beginning, because, you know, a lot of times, a lot of applications don't make it all the way through. So, you know, I'm trying to just think of, yes, transparency to me is the ultimate goal. But, you know, sometimes, you know, let's make sure that as we're working with transparency, that we're cautious of, you know, security of, you know, of that as well, so that, you know, somebody who's building a barn is going to be harassed by the neighbors.
Councilmember Stewart.
I'm all for transparency. I'm not opposed to that. I guess I'm not exactly clear on what problem we're trying to solve, and I feel like anytime we're going to pass some new regulations, we should be making sure that we have that clarity. And just as someone who's worked in security and privacy, I do have a lot of concerns about how we will capture this information, how we will keep it secure, how we will maintain people's privacy where appropriate. I just think we need to be very careful about that and ensure that we have the appropriate IT in place before we start capturing information that we can't necessarily secure appropriately. And if it's transparency, then that means we're going to share it with everybody. And again, I just, I want to make sure that we're very careful about how we go down that path. If it makes sense, and if it's solving a problem, great. But I guess, again, I'm just not sure what problem we're trying to solve.
That's one of the issues that we've raised. We'll further research it, but right now, there's no apparent exemption in the Public Records Act to keep any of this confidential. That is, put it more clearly, most likely, everything will be public.
Deputy Mayor Moran, did you have another? No. Okay. Okay. Does our city attorney need any additional information from us?
What I've heard is, keep working on it. Number two, we can build in some additional whereas clauses that, I mean, building on the transparency factor, that the citizens have a desire or an interest in knowing this information. Secondly, we'll look at some way of maybe bringing some alternatives for characterizing the types of applications that this might or might not apply to. I mean, you know, a short plat, maybe not. A single-family home, maybe not, even if it's an LLC. And then, we'll look at, a little further at the Public Records Act issue, confidentiality issue, but I think we know where that's going to end up. Anything else that you'd like us to look at?
Again, clarity on what problem we're solving.
That'd be up for council to answer that.
Yeah. So, I guess before we spend any more staff and attorney time on it, can we get some clarity on what problem we're trying to solve? I mean, just given all the things we have to do, I'm not opposed to it, but given our list of priorities and the things we have to work on, I just want to make sure we're prioritizing this appropriately.
Well, given what has been going on publicly, which has been a mess, over the last four to six weeks, it's become apparent and the public outcry and anger of not feeling like they know what's going on with, you know, in particular, what's going on with the town center, or with some of our larger developments, or who are those people? When we have something as that's the heart of the city, people want to know who's involved, who's building that, who are those people? And frankly, I feel like they deserve to know that. And they could go through the whole rigmarole of every one of those people having to go through, I guess, a public records request. But, and the other issue is, and I've seen this now being done in other cities, and I think we've talked about this also, is trying to keep track also, especially in cities that are, in states that are surrounding the US borders of, and I'm seeing it a lot in particular, I saw it in our neighborhood, where we're having houses that are being sold without ever going on a US market. And so, trying to see and keep track of, you know, what is being, you know, what's happening of, you know, what's being, the US funding and stuff that's happening, or foreign market taking, you know, buying into different portions of, whether it be town center, or houses, or whatever.
Done?
Does that answer any of your questions?
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I'm concerned about, I'm going to use the word spot zoning, Mike. I guess I don't know if that's a proper application of the term, but I use it as a way to kind of, from a non-lawyer way to say, I'm concerned that we, laws should apply equally, I would imagine, across the board, to everybody, unless I'm missing something from a due process or equal protection laws. I would want to think, I would hope that we would be applying these ordinances, which I support the concept of, you know, transparency. I'm concerned that we would spot-zone the town center with a transparency, who's behind the town center, who are these people? That's just...
We wouldn't do that.
Okay. So, that's not what I, I thought that's what was just, okay. So, I guess what I'm concerned about is if we're going to apply this, let's apply it to everybody. Let's make it a cross-the-board thing so that there's transparency and openness, no matter what you're building. And if you decide you and your little family want to form an LLC for protection, because you don't want people to know that you're building the Eastman Chicken and Cow Farm or Horse Farm, and you're, you know...
I think it's a dairy.
Okay. I guess I just, I'm, whether or not, I personally don't care if it's somebody from China buying my house, or some dude from New Mexico, or, I don't personally care, and if that's relevant to the, I guess I'm concerned that if that, what, to answer the question that we asked, Mike, what are we trying to do here? What do we, what's the goal of this ordinance, or ordinances like this, or this discussion is to try to essentially pierce the veil of a, ooh, that's a legal term right there?
Yes, it is.
You know, we're trying to, you know, dig some information out where I don't know if that is, number one, is that our place to do? And if it is, is this the right tool to do it? And beyond that, are we creating a situation where we're undue legal risk, things like that? But I just want to make sure we're, I'll stop. I want to make, my position is not that we shouldn't seek transparency, but that it should apply to everybody, no matter what the situation is, not just long plats or a large development in the center of the city, but all the way across the board, because that is, in my mind, fairness and transparency ought to go together in the same ordinance. And if we're looking at just one because it's too big, or too complicated, or those big ones are typically more apt to have LLCs, or have some sort of corporate veil hiding investors, okay. I don't know that that's a good or a bad thing. I'm just saying, is there, I'm asking, Mike, is that a legal reason or a legal precedent? Do other cities do this? What does that look like? I'm just throwing all that out there.
I understand the concern, and that, yeah, we'll take a look at that. Again, I think what we'll do on that aspect is come back to you with a couple of alternatives. One says this applies to every application. Another one says perhaps, because again, we're just now going to begin the more detailed research. But the other alternative would then say, here's some applications, or types of applications that we could cut out. But that'll ultimately be up to the council to make the decision, of course.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. Again, so, love transparency, I guess. One of the things that I heard you say, Deputy Mayor, that made me a little bit nervous was, I think we need to be really careful that once we kind of collect and share this information, that it is not viewed as we are going to use it to discriminate. And I think that's something we have to be very careful of, is that, so now, there's this disclosure, we as a city have captured this information and shared it, and now decisions are being made based on it? So, because I formed an LLC and my partner is in Mexico, now we can't buy the house? Like, I just, or, I just, I want to make sure that, again, I'm clear on what problem we're trying to solve. If it's just understanding, I mean, I'm pretty sure that people can go find out who's behind an LLC. I don't know that the city needs to be involved in that, right? So, again, I'm all for the transparency. It's just that once we insert ourselves into this process, do we insert ourselves into other forms of liability? And I always, I always think it's a bad idea when the legislative or governing body tries to put their thumb on the scale of execution, or even the appearance of such. And so, I want us to be very careful doing that. Again, great to have transparency. And again, what is the priority of this as compared to urban forestry management, as compared to diving more into our human services and what needs our community has? And, you know, we have, still haven't done what we need to do to actually figure out how we're going to improve our transportation and working on the TMP. So, I just want to make sure that this is of the highest priority item that we throw into the work plan.
Councilmember Horner.
Well, I don't think it's a lot of work, frankly. So, I don't think, you don't even have to worry about a priority. I think we just want to move forward and get it done. LLC, you can't find out who the members are. I'm a corporate attorney. I can tell you clearly, people are using it as a shield. People are setting up Cayman Islands LLCs, all kinds of tax evasions using LLCs. More importantly, there's an old law called FERPTUD. I don't even know what that stands for. Foreign Investment and Real Estate Property Transactions, I think, or something like that. But it's very clear that the federal government has been focused on this use of entities to shield people's interest in real estate. So, when you're talking about development, I think it's very clear, as a city, we have the right to know who's behind the interest in this real estate transaction. I deal with it every day with a new law that the Treasury put up for CFIUS, which is a foreign investment restriction on people trying to buy, invest in companies, and especially high-tech IP, intellectual property, that they don't want that to go to outside the country. Little bit different issue, but the issue of who's behind the entities in these type of transactions is absolutely something that people are starting to get a better feel for and want the transparency, which is why I think we move forward posthaste.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm not sure, well, one, I was much more prepared for this before. I didn't bring, I don't have my notes with me, so I'm sorry about that. But I'm not sure you're understanding that I'm not saying that we require them to put this out so that people can analyze who it is and, you know, criticize them on the internet. What I'm suggesting is that this is something that they need to turn in as information before they're handed their building permits. This is an exchange of information. This isn't something that is debatable, this isn't something that's arguable, this isn't something that can be used against them. That has nothing to do with the process. This has to do with information that is, you know, being upfront. We want to know the names of who's, the actual names of who the entity, who's got the entity. That's all this is. This isn't open for anybody to be criticized on Facebook, and Lord knows that's bad. But that's not what this is about. This is when you put in your final stuff and you want to get your permits, you will turn in your names.
Okay. I think you've heard from council. So, I'm going to jump to the next item, which is city council reports, and we have our city manager's report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. So, you've probably looked at my... So you've probably looked at my report, so I'll just briefly go through it. First item was given to me by Doug McIntyre, and basically, it just goes, it's just information for the council, just to get you prepped for when he returns on December 3rd, and then gives the council a full explanation. You can ask questions at that time. So that's what that's about. Yeah. We have a public works director recruitment in full swing. We do have Novak Consulting Firm helping us with that recruitment. Mike Sugg and I are finalizing the calendar for that. And as we go forward, I'll give council more information. We do have one candidate for our police chief, one candidate. We're going to meet with Dan and then set up some interviews with the council, twos and threes, and we'll set up some interviews with staff so we can go ahead and talk to Dan, see what he's all about, and hopefully it'll work out, and we'll look forward to, and, you know, hopefully bringing him in as our new police chief. The audit contract is in progress. We had, we asked eight, eight, I think, total, eight firms if they wanted to do it. They all said they were too busy to do it. They didn't have time. So we look like, it looks like now we have one firm that's interested. Mike is, Mike Sugg's working with them right now this week to get the SOQ this week, and we're hoping to have them under contract next week. We do apologize that it wasn't October 4th or 5th when we originally did it, but when you have eight engineering firms that are not interested, it makes it a little difficult. So it looks like we have one, so I'll keep council appraised of that as we go forward. We also are recruiting for a community development director. David has been so kind to be our interim development director, but we are out for recruitment right now for that. And along with that, we also have Chip Quarter, our new deputy city manager, starting tomorrow. You guys can't have him because he's going to be busy with me. However, we encourage you all to please come and visit Chip from about Thursday on. He's a great guy, and I think he would love to meet with you, so please come and say hi. Please, please welcome him to our city. I'm really looking forward to meeting, to working with him, and good things, I think, are going to come of that. And then our last item, or my last item, is the City of Sammish CWU lease agreement extension. And if you've looked at that, Angie wanted me just to put this on for you guys so you can see that they did re-up their lease. And if there's any questions about this, you can email me or call me, and we'd be happy to get you any other information that you need on it. And that's my report, Mayor and Council.
Great. We do have an executive session this evening. This is for 42.30.1101G. This is for the review of the performance of a public employee, and I would assume probably 30 minutes. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Oh, so moved second, yeah.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 5-1, we adjourn.